Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. Good evening. So this evening is the City Council Regular Meeting, Monday, June 4th, starting this evening at 6:45. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham Mahia.
Here.
Councilmember Kuzamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Protempo.
Present.
Mayor Edgar.
Here. I'd ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and to stay standing for the invocation tonight. The Pledge of Allegiance will be by Mayor Protempo.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you now and we thank you for the opportunity to live in a free country where we can come together and make decisions that will bless our community. We thank you for the youth that are here and as they graduate and go on, Lord, we just ask for special guidance for them and we ask for this meeting to go smoothly and be of benefit to this community. In your name, amen.
Okay, this evening we're gonna move into Special Orders of the Day and we have an interview for Traffic Commission with an applicant, Richard Murphy. And Angie, do you have a staff report or an introduction into this before we get going?
No.
Okay.
Just to go right into the questions.
Yeah, what we normally do is we either try to fit a interview into a regular meeting like we're doing now, or we'll have separate meetings. So, Richard Murphy, you can go ahead and come up here. We had opened up the request for anybody in the community that wants to be or is interested in being appointed to the Traffic Commission. So we had one person, Richard, send in his information. For the community's sake, Richard's been a pretty big contributor from the public side to our council. He's active and very involved in the city and what's going on. And he's also applied for some other commissions and so we're very glad to have you here tonight, Rich. And what I'd like to do is, first of all, give you an opportunity in just a moment, if you have any sort of introduction or overview that you would like to do, and then what we're just gonna do is, as we normally do, work down the council diocese from Councilmember Mahia over to Councilmember Kuzamoto, and we'll just each ask you an individual question and go from there. So with that, would you like to address the council?
Okay, good evening. My name is Richard Murphy. I'm a 48-year resident of Los Alamos. My background, I'm a CPA and really now more of a real estate investor, having finally figured out how to quit doing accounting for a living. And would you like to go ahead with the questions?
Yes, thank you for coming, Richard.
Thank you.
What special traits, characteristics, or experience do you bring to the Traffic Commission?
I've been here a long time, kinda watched the traffic. You could either use the word grow or decline, depending on your point of view. When I was here, the 405 freeway didn't even connect. You had to go up to Willow to get the 405 and there was no 91 and, you know, just seeing what's gone on in Catella. And I think that, other than the budgeting, that the traffic is probably the most important issue to the citizens of Los Alamos.
Thank you.
And, you know, I've seen the history and I think I'm aware of the current issues and, you know, look forward to helping out.
We look forward to being able to fix those traffic problems for us. Get right on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens.
Mr. Murphy, thank you for showing up. My question is, why would you want to serve on the Traffic Commission?
As I said, I think traffic is probably one of the most important issues in the city. And, you know, it's gotten worse and worse and I'm hopefully can be part of the solution. I have basically an overall desire to serve, you know, and quit being on this side for a little while and take some criticism.
Great, thank you. My question's, what do you think is the most significant issue facing the Traffic Commission today?
There's a couple. I think primarily Catella. I was just on Catella to remind me, you know, what it's like. And more so, you know, from a personal point of view, the alleys around Catella, you've all stated it, someday somebody's gonna get seriously hurt there. And doing whatever we can to protect the people who live in that area, especially the children who are chasing balls out from behind garages and hedges and it's a big problem. And then also, I think, working with the council as a general plan and the downtown areas get developed to try and remediate the traffic as best we can.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protempo.
Thank you, thank you for coming, Richard.
Thank you.
And applying for this. In your own words, what do you feel is the role of the Traffic Commission in Los Alamos?
I think it's to work to reduce the traffic congestion and increase the safety at the same time within the city.
Great. Councilmember Kuzamoto.
When considering actions by the Traffic Commission, how do you balance the best interests of the entire community against the likes or dislikes of yourself, your friends, or your neighbors?
I think when you even apply for this job, you kinda have to give up your preferences in that regard and, you know, commit to working for the entire community. Unfortunately, I have no business interest in Los Alamos that will, you know, give me any type of conflict of interest. And, but just, I just think when you apply for the position, you really have to go that way, that you're committing to do that.
Thank you. So, Mr. Murphy, do you have any closing statement, anything that you'd like to add to the council before we go for the vote?
No.
Okay, we appreciate you coming down here this evening and we appreciate your interest in the Traffic Commission. What I'm gonna do is ask the City Council to go ahead and pick up a form that, first of all, let me make sure everybody's got one, the Indication of Support. And if you've already filled them out, go ahead and hand them over. What we're gonna do is give the city clerk just a few moments to tabulate the final results and then she'll make the announcement.
We have five indications of support for Richard Murphy, Traffic Commission applicant.
Good job. Congratulations, Rich.
Welcome.
Mayor, can we just get a motion in a second to approve?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Richard Murphy to the open seat on the Traffic Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, nobody opposes, it's official. Congratulations. All right. Next up is, we have a presentation, so I would ask, just wanna make sure, yeah, two status update from Ted Stevens, Acting Manager, regarding the Long Beach Animal Control Services. Angie?
So Mr. Ted Stevens is here and he will kindly give us an update.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Ted Stevens. I'm the Acting Manager for Long Beach Animal Care Services. We provide your animal control and sheltering needs here in the city. I'm here in response to an issue that was brought to my attention after your last council meeting. Unfortunately, it was brought to my attention that Ms. Alice Jempa had some concerns with the service that she received from us regarding a deceased animal on her property. And then unfortunately, the person that spoke to one of her neighbors on the phone, you know, apparently hung up on him and, you know, made some unfortunate comments. And I just wanna let you know, once those are brought to my attention, obviously I take both of those very serious. They're not anything that's condoned. Couple of my staff, you know, I've been, since I've taken on this job in January, I've kinda been reviewing all my staff. Couple of my staff have gone on to be successful someplace else. They're no longer with us. And we've also made, I've actually had some concerns with dead animal pickups. We've got a lot of calls for service right now. We've had some issues, even in Long Beach, with taking several days to get to animals. And we've made an operational change now. We've got some staff that are less trained, in the shelter staff, and as we see, you know, dead animal calls being picked up, now we're having someone else go out and just take care of those. That's not necessarily a trained officer, so we're getting to those a lot faster now. We've got just a dedicated staff person just driving around picking up the animals. There's quite a few right now in the springtime. So I just wanna let you know, I've addressed these issues. You know, unfortunately, these are issues that happen every once in a while and I take them very serious and I just wanna let you know that. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Great, thank you, Mr. Stevens. Does anybody have any questions?
Sure. What is your phone number?
My phone number is 562-570-3051. That's my direct line.
And would you want the community using your direct line anytime we have a?
If they have an issue, you know, if the general line does not meet their needs, by all means, bring it to my attention and I'd like to squash it before it gets to you guys. I don't think you guys should have to deal with these kinds of issues. That's what my job is. So by all means, if someone tells the city if they have an issue, please come to me and I'll take care of it.
Very good. And a second question, what is the turnaround time if someone does call you and, let's say there is a dead animal in the street or something? What should the normal turnaround time be, or response time?
I would say that I would like to see it picked up within 24 hours. I'd say that's, to me, is kinda reasonable. If it's really busy, you know, maybe 36 hours, but I'd like to see it in 24 hours. I've had animals, I've even gotten emails, people are so happy because we picked it up in an hour. So it just, it depends on the call volume that day and the number of officers and if they're in a certain area, but I would say 24 hours is where I would like to see it.
That's the maximum outside window?
Yeah, I would say that's, that would be our goal, that's the issue for. And I think with this new operational change, I think we can meet that goal.
Very good, thank you.
Good job. Anybody else have any other questions?
I do.
Okay, Councilmember Mahia.
How many people do you have working just picking up the animals?
Well, I have, in the middle, and during the day, I have four to five officers in the field.
Okay.
Spread out through the four contract cities and Long Beach. And then what I have, I just have, I have my dispatch keeping an eye on the call volume and the number of dead pickups. If there's, they start seeing a lot, I pull one of my shelter staff and I send them out in a truck and they'll just go around and that's all they'll do is pick up the dead animals that day.
Right, okay. I have the opportunity to sit on vector control and I know that there's been some issues with typhus, fleas on some of the, you know, animals that you might be dealing with. How do we keep with this response time, and this is not, you know, being adversarial, how do we guarantee that that stuff doesn't spread if it's taking this long to pick it up?
Um...
I mean, to the neighbor animals, like, for Alice, in her case. The animal was on her front yard and so there are cats and such. The fleas are the things that are carrying the typhus and they're going on to the animals that we have in our own homes. So my concern is, I know you're doing the best you can, is there any way that, or is there anyone we could lobby for you to get you more people in this position because having those animals sit there and potentially spreading that could be an issue for us?
Yeah, I could, you know, we're, everyone's facing budget cuts, but I think actually we're, we've been actually very fortunate in the last couple of years that we've been actually been able to add staff.
Great.
So our City Council, because of the contract cities that we have, the synergy we get with the four contract cities and Long Beach, we're able to have more staff and, you know, we're hoping to possibly do that again next year.
Okay.
We're doing our budget process right now and we are hoping to look, to hopefully add more people next year and I think we can, you know, maybe try to shorten that less than 24 hours.
Right.
The summertime's always gonna be worse, and the spring and the summer are gonna be worse just because there's more animals, there's little babies getting out. In the fall, I know we can probably beat that 24 hours, but...
Well, I appreciate you coming here because when we addressed the contract renewal, this was one of the main things that the residents were not happy about. And this is the first time we've heard it since then and it's been a couple of years, so that's, I think that's a testament to your department. Glad to see you're here since January and looking to clean things up a little bit, but thank you for coming tonight and giving us the opportunity to talk to you.
Yeah, no problem. These are actually one of the number one complaints I get, besides barking, is, "When are you gonna come pick up this dead animal?"
Yeah.
So that's one of those things I'm definitely keenly aware of and I wanna improve on because I don't like getting those calls.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Sure, I'll go. I just wanna thank you for coming here and, like you said, this is something we certainly don't wanna have to deal with as a council, but appreciate you coming, addressing us. And then perhaps maybe on an annual basis, if you can just come and give us a brief report, that might be more productive than having to come over here and explain why things didn't go right, but, you know, I thank you for your effort.
I'd love the opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, well, we appreciate you coming and, you know, it definitely says something about your responsiveness, coming up, taking responsibility. I, you know, just kind of on your behalf, I hope that the community uses the phone numbers that are listed on the website, which are the normal service phone numbers, so that you don't get bogged down, so that we save the real requirements when our service hasn't been provided to actually call you, so that you'll continue to be responsive to us. So we really appreciate you coming down, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, next is a video presentation by Chief Reader from the Orange County Fire Authority regarding drowning prevention. How you doing, Chief?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I wanna thank you for inviting us on behalf of Chief Richter to talk about a subject that is probably gonna be used by somebody in the city here and that's drowning prevention for children especially. We have a short clip here that we'll play and then I can answer some questions and I have a few words after that.
Great.
My boss! My boss! My boss! Are you okay? Are you okay, honey? Are you okay? Are you okay? Are you okay? Are you okay? Children drown without a sound. It's a silent killer. Supervision is key to prevention, so please, watch the water. at 714-573-6200 or visit our website at ocfa.org.
Thank you. The reason I started that off saying we will, probably somebody here in the community is gonna be faceless and that's because this drowning is the leading cause of death for children under five in California. It is the second leading cause for children under the age of 14. And really, that was a very simple message, but if the public could, or those people watching at home, is to remember the simple thing of the ABCs. That's where the focus is. Those pictures show children, but really the focus for us is the adults. That's where it comes to assign, the very first part is to assign somebody to watch the water. And that simple tag, I just had this very opportunity this weekend, my grandson's Little League team celebrated a swimming pool party at my daughter's house. And what I noticed from doing this is I watched the children closely, but who I really watched were the adults. And the part of the adults in this message was, it is somebody being assigned. And that tag, this simple, this tag, my daughter didn't have one. She lives in LA County, not Orange County. She didn't have one and I started walking around and asking about this tag. And this whole idea of keeping the adults focused, this very simple tag, if you take it, assign this tag to her, she's now the water watcher. The better part of that for the adults now is somebody is walking around looking for the person with the tag and that's what works. Because when they see somebody at the pool, or her, she's gone somewhere else, thank you for volunteering, somewhere else, and there isn't somebody at the pool with the tag, then they know that somebody has not assigned that very task. And so this is critical, this is a very simple piece. They are available at every fire station here in Orange County, I'm sure LA County as well. But you can pick 'em up, drop by the fire station, get these, and when you have those parties, assign this tag to somebody and then they're walking around, they're not by the pool, then you know that specifically somebody is not assigned to that task. And really, if you look on 'em, look at there, it's not the children. The children are very focused, they're focused on fun. Who needs to be focused to solve this are the adults. And it does come with this very, very simple task. And that's pretty much it.
All right, great. So the ABCs.
It is the ABCs.
Yeah.
The barriers, the fencing around that, it's pretty much the code. You know, you know if you're gonna have a pool, that, the fence, self-closing gates, the CPR is the other part of the C. But really, that key to it is the alertness and the awareness of the adults in the area and not getting the distractions. One good thing about having this, if you are at the party, people bring you the food and people bring you the drinks. You don't have to get up and go do anything because that's your job.
Great.
So do you have any questions?
I'd like to ask Mayor Protempo, she was the one that asked to have this brought forward. Do you have some comments?
Well, thank you so much for doing this. We've had this available to us every year. It is, all the years that I was on the Fire Authority, I was very aware that this, I believe it's three-year-old boys that are the ones that are really the high ones to watch, although all of the children. And I have one of those, we have a pool, and when I have children and adults, and the key, as you said, is the adults, because the adults are talking to each other and so on and everyone thinks that somebody else is watching the kids.
Exactly, you, she is exactly right. That is really it. When I said I was watching the adults and the distractions, you just turn your head for a moment and...
Exactly. And they can slip in so quickly. We have a four-year-old grandson, he's taking swimming lessons and I really think that he would flip over, he's learned to do it, but it's kind of interesting. He does really well at the pool where he takes the lessons, but when he's in our pool, it's a different pool and he's not as comfortable. The instructor's not there, even though I was in the pool with him and some of the other family members, he still was a little tentative about, just, "I will sink," he said. And so it's just so scary to think that it can happen so fast and so easily and it happens... The time for me that I'm more concerned is when, as you said, and as it showed, there's more adults around.
Yeah.
Because someone thinks someone else is watching, so if you have that tag, I make them put it on. And if you're not gonna watch anymore, you give it to somebody else and they're the pool watcher. It's just so important because it is so preventable.
And it's very effective. Like you said, I couldn't agree any more.
Uh-huh. And I think we had some here at City Hall, some of those tags, and I know at the fire station and any, like you said, anyone should get them. And thank you so much for coming and doing this.
You're welcome.
Especially at the beginning of summer when people weren't gonna all be in the pool often, so it's just something so very important.
And if anybody wants to pick 'em up, they are available at the station. I got one of these right on the way down.
All right.
Great, thank you, Chief. Okay, at this point, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open the meeting up for oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward and speak to the council within any item within subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to no more than five minutes. I've got one card and it's John Osborne. Good evening, John.
Thank you, council. Thank you for being here, thank you for doing everything that you do. I'm John Osborne, Chairman of the Board, Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce. You know, it's funny, I'm just sitting here watching the TV, not exactly watching you and the enhancements and the power of video and TV broadcasting. You're all a bunch of good-looking people up here, let me tell you.
We had that special made.
And I see an older gentleman that just walked in with his cap here and he's got a CIB that says the 88th Division, that can only be from World War II. Thank you for your service.
Oh, wow.
I would recognize that combat infantry badge a mile away. Okay, so we've got a couple of upcoming events with the Chamber of Commerce in a couple of weeks, about two and a half weeks, we will have the 30th Annual Silver Golf Tournament at El Dorado Park, our 30th Annual. Hope to see you all there. If you can't, please sponsor a foursome, a single, anything you can do is always appreciated. Also want to encourage the council to begin thinking in terms of reinforcing us or doing whatever, doing whatever you do in terms of Wings, Wheels, and Rotors. Wings, Wheels, and Rotors is only a few months away. We are working on some different things this year with the addition of Roland Sands in town. Roland Sands is an international brand in motorcycles and we are looking at bringing some of the motorcycle market and manufacturing into Wings, Wheels, and Rotors. I'm currently taking that task on myself. We're also working on some big-name brands in, not only in sponsorship, but in, you know, display and that sort of thing. I won't put out what we're working on, but it is quite possible you will see some, a couple of major brands, other than just the major sponsors this year. Last year, Ford and Mitsubishi came in as our title sponsors and I thought that was a pretty good accomplishment, but we can be looking maybe for some other things coming. All right, that being said, I wanna thank you all for continuing to do what you do. You're laying the groundwork for people like us in the business community to continue to do what we do. I don't know that any one of us is, would really think of ourselves as succeeding. It's a tough economy out there. Most of us are holding on, as are some of you who are in business, and I think we're all in the same boat. And I wanna continue to thank you for your individual, personal support and the plans and actions that you're promoting and developing and continuing to work on. And with that, I will say good evening, have a great one. Did I say you're all a bunch of good-looking people?
Yeah. And John, I would also tell the chamber, if you could tell the chamber board, we're very appreciative. On last Friday, you guys have your monthly chamber meeting on, down at the Marriott.
Yes.
And in case anybody in the community's interested, and since you and Judy have been running the show up there, we're starting to get a significant amount of increase in people joining and I don't know if you wanna put a plug in for anybody out there that may have a business that wants to get involved with your organization.
Okay, I'll bite, I'll bite, Mayor. I'll take the bait, sure. Growth continues to happen in the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce. Exact numbers, about 240-plus and growing. There are some numbers that I'm concerned about that have dropped recently in the last several months and I talked to everybody who is incoming and outgoing and the reasons why. You know, it's a tough economy for big business, it's a really tough economy for small business. You know, there's, I could name a couple of businesses, but I really don't wanna expose them. You know, but it's tough if you're a candy purveyor or you have a specialty shop or something. There just aren't that many people to go around that might be interested in the products that are sold in a, you know, in a small space. With the rents being what they are, taxes and overhead and all that, it takes a lot of inventory sales to sustain a business. Even more so if you have a family and you're dependent on that business. And that's why we see a constant turnover in small business, there just isn't enough to go around, you know, things are tight. But any of you sitting here, I would encourage all you young folks, come out and take in a Chamber of Commerce meeting, see what it's all about. We just did our scholarships, a couple, a week or so ago over at the high school, the We Hire Scholarship and the scholarship that is from the chamber itself for our Youth Ambassador Program. And I feel, you know, a few of you know my personal story here. This, you know, you can look at it any way you want to, fate, destiny, you know, I kinda, I kinda landed here. I might as well have jumped out of a 747 with blindfolds and a parachute and landed in Los Alamos. I do wanna tell you, I'm very, very happy to be here and I will continue to do whatever I can to make this a better place.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work. All right, does anybody else wanna make a public comment?
My name is Shelley Henderson. I am not a resident of Los Alamos, but I do own a business here and I just wanted to let everybody know that the first print edition of Orange County Breeze was delivered last Thursday and if you did not receive it, we want to know. Send an email to editor@oc-breeze.com and let me know if you did not find an Orange Candy Breeze print edition on your driveway last Thursday or Friday, because we want to make sure that everybody in our coverage area gets a copy of this brand-new monthly print publication. And for those of you who did receive it and did email me your comments, thank you so much. We have received so much positive support from the community. I just want to turn it back and say thank you so much. That's all.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
A lot of us in the council went to your opening a couple of weeks ago when we knew you were launching that and, you know, we're very appreciative that you guys take as much time as you do in our community and making sure everybody knows what's going on and thank you.
You are welcome. You are welcome. It's what we do.
Yep, good job. Okay, any other comments? All right. We've got a team coming up now. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Casey, and this is Mackenzie and Madison from Girl Scout Troop 67. We are here to tell you about our Silver Award Project, which is the highest award a cadet girl scout can earn. It is a sustainable project that benefits our community. Our Silver Award Project is an emergency preparedness program that we are preparing for the residents and staff of Laurel Park Manor. Laurel Park Manor is a 69-unit seniors housing complex located on Cotella Avenue.
The final component of our project is a disaster preparedness workshop with a presentation by the American Red Cross. We will also have interactive stations focusing on to-go bags, disaster preparedness supplies, caring for pets during disaster, first aid kits, choosing out-of-state contacts and emergency supplies for your car. Handouts at each station will be available in a variety of languages.
We invite the community to join us and the residents of Laurel Park Manor for this program on Tuesday, June 26th at 6:00 PM. Laurel Park Manor is located at 4121 Cotella Avenue in Los Alamos. The presentation by the Red Cross will last approximately 45 minutes with the interactive stations available before and after the presentation. Does anybody have any questions for us?
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Very, very good for you guys to come. Disaster preparedness is, it's something that needs to be addressed. Uh, I, I'm sorry, I didn't get the time of your event.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM? And that's, um, that's the, it's right behind Laurel Park, in essence. For people who don't know, there's a little church towards the front, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so just so if anybody's interested, it's off of Cotella, behind the small church that's located right next to Laurel Park. Well, I, congratulations, girls. I mean, this is a really good thing to be doing for the community, especially for the seniors. So thank you.
Anybody else? Hey, uh, girls, I, oh, just, go ahead.
Well, I, I knew that they were coming tonight. Uh, Jennifer Stanton had called me, and, uh, thank you so much for coming. And this is such a great, uh, uh, project for you to get your Silver Award with. Uh, I know that the residents, uh, at Laurel Park Manor are going to be so appreciative of what you're doing. Uh, thank you again so much, and I'm really glad you came tonight.
Yeah, you know, I'll take care of this. I don't have to do it during council comments. But, uh, I had an opportunity to actually give you guys your Silver Award, and, uh, I was honored to be there, you know, that, uh, Marilyn, you usually go, and I'm, I'm tagging along.
I know. I was out of town, and I was really sorry, because I always love going.
But, uh, unbelievable, uh, ceremony you guys had. Very well-deserving. And, uh, you know, the part that a lot of people don't remember is Laurel Park, Laurel Park Manor had caught fire. And part of the issue was that, uh, you know, the concern was, would there be a good evacuation and, and disaster plan if something happened? So really, uh, you picked something that's really important, that those folks, and it's a real cultural bed in there. A lot of different diversity, uh, folks in there, five different languages. If you go in there and talk to the people, they're the nicest people, and it's, uh, it's like Babylon. It's trying to figure out, uh, what's going on. And so again, I would just say it was a great project. Uh, I was very proud to give you guys the award, and, uh, thank you for coming up here tonight. Thank you. All right, any other public comment? Okay. See, now we're gonna go ahead and close, uh, public, our oral communication, and we're gonna move to the register of major expenditures.
Make a motion to move it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, for a second, we'll call the, please, Seacler.
Councilmember Graham Mahia.
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Mayor Protonpo.
I will abstain, because I do have a conflict with, um, the engineering, uh, that was done in an area that I own property.
Mayor Edgar.
Aye. All right. So, uh, next up is the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon with one motion, unless a council member would like to pull one of the items specifically. What would you guys like to do?
Mayor, I'd like to pull Item A and make a motion to move the remainder, unless there's other council members who'd like to pull any additional items.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahia. Anybody want to pull anything else? Okay, I've got a motion, uh, to, uh, move the balance. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 I need to abstain on Item 9C, again, because I have property within the, um, boundaries of where this is going to take place.
Okay. Uh, going back now to Item 9A, approval of the minutes. Councilmember Mahia.
Wendy, I'd just like noted for the record, um, that since the, uh, many minutes have been changed in their format, I don't believe that they include enough information, uh, for anyone who would be trying to decipher, uh, what the council felt regarding certain items and all that it depicts is how we voted. And in the past, there's been, uh, issues where this current council has had to look back and try and figure out what the intent of prior councils were. And it's very difficult to do if there's not enough information. So I'd like to see them changed back to the original format. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back to you.
Okay, great. Um, anybody else have any comments on the meeting minutes? Okay, I do have comments. If, uh, you can go to the May 21st special meeting. Uh, I, Item Number Two, roll call. Who was present, who was absent? In there, it says Mayor Edgar arrived at 5:18. I just want a short note in there, put as due to, uh, required city business, Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. Uh, I didn't opt to be late. I, I was running late, uh, from another meeting for the city, and I, I just want it noted in the record.
Er, you were tard.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, with that, uh, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to, uh, to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any oppose?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the, uh, discussion items, number 10. Uh, Discussion Item 10A, Consolidated Disposals Public Education and Outreach Program, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this item, um, was requested by Councilmember Mahia. And what we're talking about here tonight is, um, the public outreach and education portion of our contract with Consolidated Disposal. And so, um, just to, um, go over it a little bit, I'd, I'd like to take the opportunity to do that. Uh, we entered into our contract with Consolidated Disposal Services on January 1, 2011. And as part of the overall contract with the city, um, there is a section in the contract that is specific to what Consolidated, uh, will do or is currently doing to educate our community and what they're doing to outreach to our community, um, about their services and about basically recycling in general. So, uh, there are four basic components of that program. That program, uh, totals, uh, $280,000 over the life of the contract, which is, is five years. And so what that means is, where does the $280,000 come from? It comes from Consolidated Disposal to the city for the purposes of, um, various means of outreach to the city. Um, for example, of the $280,000, uh, over $150,000 of that, over five years, is to sponsor several of our major events, um, uh, such as Race on the Base and Fourth of July. And, uh, through those events, as you know, those are huge city events. That's where Consolidated can reach a lot of people, all at one time, uh, to do their community outreach. So it makes a lot of sense. So, uh, again, that portion of, of the contract is over $150,000 over five years for event sponsorship to provide outreach. Now, another thing, uh, in that category that they do is, uh, sponsor our multifamily cleanup days. And we've just had our first one. Uh, that was in Old Town East a couple of weekends ago, Saturday morning. And so that's where Consolidated will provide the big blue bins, um, big trash bins. And everyone in that community can, um, bring, clean out their garage, clean their houses, whatever, and bring bulky items, throw it in the big trash bin, and then Consolidated will, will cart it away. So, um, we have, through, again, the five-year contract, there are, will be multiple, uh, family cleanup days in every neighborhood. And again, that is for the purpose of community outreach. Um, so that's $150,000 of the 280. Um, the second-largest amount of, of, um, outreach monies goes to pay for, uh, publications and media. And in this regard, um, just about $90,000 is allocated for, um, uh, ads in our quarterly recreation brochure. Also, uh, part of this, uh, Consolidated is sponsoring, um, um, Los Alamos High School athletic broadcasts. And, um, and you might ask, well, you know, what does athletics have to do with recycling and Consolidated? But by sponsorship of LATV broadcasts of the high school athletic programs, um, on LATV, then, um, the credits roll at the end, and that's how the community knows that, um, Consolidated is sponsoring this program and is, again, a, a means of community outreach. Um, the next category is, um, actually, uh, it's called a Big Belly Solar Compactor. And, um, Consolidated thought, this was, uh, staff's idea, Tony Brandyberry's idea. Uh, you don't see these around town yet, because we haven't, um, uh, purchased them yet. We're looking forward to that in 2013, 2013. Um, but these are portable solar compactors, trash compactors, that will be placed around town. $20,000 has been allocated toward this, and there's advertising on the sides of the Big Belly Solar Compactor. So the community can look forward to those. And then the last category is outreach to the business community. And Consolidated has allocated just under $20,000. Um, and they, they are advocating outreach, uh, through the Chamber of Commerce. John Osborne was just here. Um, as the, the, the localized mechanism for the most efficient way to outreach to the city's businesses. Again, to educate them about, um, recycling and bulky waste, green waste, um, things of that nature that all have to do, uh, with Consolidated Disposal. So if you, you add up all those things over the course of five years, um, the benefit to the community is $280,000, most of which is, um, you know, the city would not have the means to, uh, pay for these things. Can, can we buy Big Belly Solar Compactors? Well, if we did that in this budget year, we would have to cut something else. Um, you all remember that the Fourth of July was a very controversial issue a couple of years ago, when we were searching for ways to, uh, obtain sponsorship. And, um, that was about the time this contract was negotiated. And so, uh, through this, uh, Fourth of July sponsorship is $15,000 every year for five years, um, as an outreach mechanism. So, um, that's basically the nuts and bolts of the report. There is no fiscal impact for review of this item, but it was an opportunity to explain how the community education and outreach portion of the contract is providing the community things that, um, we wouldn't necessarily have the money to sponsor or purchase on our own. This, this is specific to, um, this money cannot be used for other things. It is for community education and outreach, um, for, uh, like I keep mentioning, um, recycling and educating the community about the services that Consolidated Disposal provides the community. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Angie. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and bring it back. Uh, Councilmember Mahia.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, the reason I initially brought this up was because it was a document. Uh, Angie made a reference in one of our past council meetings, and I, I said, well, I don't think I've, I don't think I've heard that we were doing that with the $280,000. So, requested a copy of the, um, the breakdown of where the monies were going. And I think there was a little miscommunication between Angie and I, because my question to her was, is this money coming from the revenues generated by the trash contract and not from Consolidated? And the miscommunication was, I believe she had said this money was coming from the revenues that were going to the city, which in that would have made the, some of these anyways, I believe, conflict of interest. Uh, so when I reached out to her today, she confirmed for me today that this is from a separate budget, the $280,000 from Consolidated. And, um, that no longer raises a concern for me. So my issue now is, I, uh, I was a little, I was a little upset that we didn't ever see this document. We didn't have any input, and it never came to the council for, uh, its last run-through to get our okay. And the, uh, on page, I guess it's page one of the attachment, uh, in Section 6.03, it talks about the contractor shall prepare, submit, and implement an annual calendar for the public outreach. And in that, it also talks about that it will be submitted for annual review to the city, which would mean the city council. And it never came to us, and I just think that this is something that needs to be addressed by this council. It needs to be reviewed, as the contract says, no later than September 30th of every year. And I want the council to know that, you know, some of these things may be effective, but they may only be effective for a year. So we need to look at this potentially at least a month ahead of time, so that we can decide whether or not we still think that the money should be spent in this area for the public outreach, and that we can always reach out to Consolidated and, uh, get their okay to move forward with it. So those are my concerns at this point, Mayor, and I'll go ahead and pass it back to you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Mahia. Anybody else have any comments? Okay. Okay, uh, with that, I, I guess, Jerry, I just want to make sure that I'm, any, if, if there's no other comments, the recommendation is to receive and file. Uh, do you feel you've met your objective, what you want to accomplish tonight? Would you like us to, no one else?
Sure. I'd like to have us do a little research and find out why it never came to the council in the first place. Because we've had a substantial amount of money paid in the first year. And as I told Angie, I'm not opposed to these things, but I, I would like to find out. And obviously Angie was not our city manager at the time. So it's gonna be difficult. But I'd like to find out why it never came to council, and that's something we can discuss, not at a, at a council meeting further.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then are you okay if I go ahead and move on?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna move on to, uh, Item B. Now, this item is setting dates for, for two community meetings to discuss the reduction of tax rate and modernization of the current telephone users' tax. City Manager.
Thank you. Uh, this is the second time that this issue has been before the council in as many council meetings. And so I'd like to, um, um, give my report and then have City Attorney Sandy Levin, um, weigh in if there's anything that I've missed or specifically with regard to, to legal issues. What this item is about is, um, specifically tonight, we, staff is seeking authority to move ahead with planning and execution of two community meetings later this month to educate the community about placing a measure on the ballot regarding the telephone users' tax. And so, just to clarify things right from the beginning, um, this is not, you're not gonna vote tonight whether to put this on the ballot. You're going to vote whether, just to hold the community meetings to see what, what the community feelings are about this. And then, the, our next meeting, I'm sorry, well, I'll get to that in a minute. But let me bring you, um, let me remind you what we're talking about here with telephone users' tax. The city receives approximately $650,000 in yearly revenue from a tax on, uh, telephones and, and, from, from telephone users. Um, that's a significant portion of our revenue that, that we receive on an annual basis. That's a significant portion of our revenue that we receive on an annual basis. Our ordinance right now that we have governing the collection of this tax is outdated. And so it becomes an administrative kind of function to update the ordinance, but it would have to go on the ballot and be approved by the majority of voters. We are not certainly the only ones in California that are doing this and this is not a crazy idea that we've just made up. There are many, many communities that have already done this up and down the state. And the reason that cities are doing this to modernize the existing ordinance, their existing ordinance is to, is because older technologies are in place and the description of those older technologies with regard to telephones are, need to be updated. Newer advanced technologies telephone-wise may not be being taxed right now. And the council has asked us to do some research, which we did, which I'll talk about next. But basically, it's an administrative function to update the city's ordinance and, like I said, it has to go on the ballot. This is an item to protect our large revenue source. It's not going to add a tax necessarily and the council will decide exactly the percentage of telephone users' taxes we go forward. We currently are at a 6% telephone users' tax percentage, which is about, right in the middle of most cities, can be somewhat low compared to other cities that have been researched. So let me go right to the research then. And what we did is, you all have this in your packet, staff researched 18 cities and that's in your large spreadsheet. Of these 18, 12 were contacted by telephone and so there was a good discussion with 12 out of the 18. We chose those cities that had passed a ballot measure between the years, in the years 2007, 2008, 2009. We did this because we wanted the greatest chance of being able to compare the revenue data because obviously if a measure's passed, you have to wait a little while to determine if your revenue is going up or down. TUT rates of those surveyed, the cities, the TUT rates ranged anywhere from 2.4% to 10%. Again, ours is 6%. 11 of the 18 cities reduced their telephone users' tax rate. Seven maintained their existing rate. And so that tells us that everyone did, each city did what they thought was appropriate for their specific situation. Without question, all cities had the same goal of updating their ordinance and protecting the revenue from potential legal challenges. Creating fairness in the implementation of the tax by broadening the base to include new technology. Of these 18 cities, all of the ballot measures were approved by an overwhelming majority of voters. And that is a column that is close to the left-hand side of your spreadsheet. So what we learned, I mean, specifically what you asked staff to do was to dig deep, deeper, and try to explore the impact on the revenues from the various cities. After implementation of the telephone users' tax, did the city's revenues jump up? Did they decrease? Did they flatline? Just what actually happened? So I think you can, I mean, it's written in the report that the revenue was, across the board, some went up, some went down. But across, I mean, if I had to summarize all of it, it was rather inconclusive because at the same time in these cities, you know, that was during the major part of the recession. So the problem we had of the 18 cities that we initially started with, there were only six that could break out the specific telephone users' tax as part of their overall utility users' tax bundle. So Sandy told us it would be hard to drill down and find this information and it was. And Anita spent the better part of an entire week doing nothing but this. And I even did a little bit of research myself, too. So, let's see where we are here. So back to the revenue. We feel that the total economic scene during the recession had more to do with their revenue picture than specifically the ballot measure. The other things that we learned, and actually this was, this was just a very good learning exercise for staff. Anita found that most seemed to have voter support with minimal outreach on their part because most of the cities either kept their tax the same or they reduced their tax. It wasn't a tax increase. So the voters understood that. And that they reported as a whole, or the majority, well, that's just what I said, their election process went rather smoothly. So pardon me for being disjointed in my report there, but I think if I had to summarize this just, you know, personally, the elections went well because it wasn't a tax increase. It was difficult to really find a pattern about the impact on the revenues. And that, just like we are contemplating, most of, in fact, all of the cities, the ballot measures passed and they contemplated this for the same reasons that we are. They wanted to update their language and broaden the base, if you will. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sandy. Well, one more thing, you'll see on attachment three, there, we've, Anita prepared a chart exactly like we see in our budget presentations about charting the revenue from the cities that we could pull out their TUT tax revenue. And you can see by the shaded boxes that it, the cities are kind of, it's really hard to predict after a ballot measure passes if revenue will increase or decrease. But what all these cities have done is protect their tax. So Sandy, do you have anything else to add?
I don't think so. I think you covered all the issues, but I'm available for questions.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and bring it back. Very important item that we're focused on at the council level and probably what I'd like to do instead of kind of expanding on it myself is that two of the people within the city council that have taken the leadership role and trying to help us as a council take this to the community is Councilmember Mejia and Councilmember Kusamoto. I would, before we get into any detail, I'd like to know if either one of you guys would like to speak to this a little bit and talk about it before we go much further.
Sure. I think Warren would like to.
Sure. I'd like to, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Go ahead.
You know, I studied this a little bit further and I know a little bit of the background that we all had received in closed session about this when it looked like we might, there might be class action lawsuits. And if I recall, this is really going to be directed to the city attorney. So you had brought up previously about the antiquated excise tax that had to do with distance and time, the zone unit message, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I read our ordinance, I don't see any of that in our ordinance at all. Is there a legal court definition of what a telephone is? Because that's what's in our ordinance, telephone. It doesn't say Skype, which I don't know if you can really tax Skype, but...
No, the definitions that apply are the ones in your ordinance. There is, the version that's in your municipal code now is a version that was adopted by the city council without voter approval.
In 1992.
No, in 2006 or '07, somewhere around there, there was an amendment adopted. So the reference to the FET that was in your ordinance for many years was removed in a council action that was taken.
Okay.
In an attempt to clarify the intent.
Okay.
But in order to really fully protect it, we need to get voter approval. So that would be part of the change that would be approved by the voters in modernizing and updating the ordinance.
So prior to 2006, then we did have the language in there similar to a city that's nearby, that something about the federal excise tax.
Yes.
Okay. So that, and that's the part that is subject to a challenge?
That is one of many things that is potentially subject to challenge. All of them relate to the fact that it's just outdated language. The FET language was outdated. There are references to physical locations, things like situs of telephones, that that kind of language came from an era when there were just landlines and not mobile telephones. There are a lot of things about the language, similar to many, many other cities, that are just outdated in terms of current technology and billing plans. And some 60 or so cities in California have already updated their ordinances. So we're...
So really, the essence of it is the ordinance that were the, the municipal code that we have right now is not sufficient because of Prop 218.
And it's also not fully modernized. All that the council did when they removed the FET reference was to modernize one particular aspect by eliminating the reference to the FET. That action that was taken has been challenged in other cities as potentially not consistent with Proposition 218. And then there are a host of other issues with the ordinance that are also still outdated.
But in the challenges in the other cities, have the other cities lost?
They've either settled or they're still in litigation. There's nobody who has won that issue.
Okay.
There's nobody who has lost it in any kind of published decision.
Okay. And then for the case where there is a carrier that's not paying us right now, why don't we just go ahead and, you know, sue them for the fees that they owe us based on the ordinance, the way it's written, the municipal code? It's not enforceable?
Couple of things. One is, we wouldn't know who is not paying us in full and who isn't without spending a pretty good chunk of change on conducting audits of those carriers. And two is that if we did, we could trigger litigation that would be very expensive for the city and we wouldn't be on our best footing because we wouldn't necessarily be able to defend the old ordinance. With more modern language, then at least we're in a position where if we do find out about somebody who is not paying us or not collecting the tax, then we'd have a, you know, a solid claim against them. As it currently stands with an outdated ordinance, we're just inviting them to try and defend by challenging our ordinance.
Okay. So the real key then is, the updated ordinance, municipal code 2006, is not consistent with Prop 218, which is 1996. Is that kind of the, how I understand?
I don't want to say it's not consistent with. There have been arguments raised about it. No court has decided that yet. There are plenty of cities who are, who are still defending based on challenges before they changed their ordinance. And I wish those cities all the best of luck in defending and upholding what they did under Prop 218. But it's an expensive process to go through and I just assume not have Los Alamos have to go through it.
Sure. But again, I think the other, the other part is not trivial either and there's a gamble there, right? The other, facing it in November, it may not go in a good way.
If the ballot measure doesn't pass, then you're legally no worse off than you were before. You still have your old ordinance in place. But obviously, there's effort and...
But define, define old ordinance. I'm not, I'm looking at the code and I don't know what, what's the definition of the code then? The old code, the pre-2006?
You have two different versions of the code that you could, that you could use that, one of which was, as far as I know, voter, not voter approved, but predated Prop 218, so isn't subject to any kind of Prop 218 challenge. Another one that potentially could be challenged under Prop 218. And then that one as well, both of them have other outdated language that could be challenged on other issues. So there are probably six or eight major issues out there that are being challenged in other cities in, that have telephone users' taxes that are of the similar older model. Some of those cities did what Los Alamos did and did a non-voter-approved amendment to eliminate the FET reference. That helps with some arguments. It gives you a better legal argument, but it still doesn't give you a bulletproof legal argument and it still leaves other issues open to challenge. And the possibility that the technology will change still further and new issues will come up. So the goal of a modernized ordinance is to encompass communications technology more generally, make sure that everybody who is using communications technology, whether it's a cellphone or a landline or VoIP or whatever the major, you know, whatever the newest technology is, will be covered in the same manner. And that you won't have these legal challenges that some other cities have experienced. The alternative is to leave the ordinance as it is and...
And then like you said, no worse off than we were before, but I'm still trying to figure out what the worse off before, I mean, what it is the before or the current one. And I'm reading it one way and apparently it'd been updated without Prop 218 being enacted, is I think the interpretation. Yet I think when you go back to, I think it was Measure Q, I think we talked about this, Measure Q, when the UUT was put in place, which included telephone. So it comes back to my question, what is the definition of a telephone? And if we stick to what's the definition of telephone, maybe that's where, you know, we have the escape, you know, our loophole.
I don't think there's any loophole here that would save you from the possibility of the kinds of challenges that other cities are experiencing. It is possible that those other cities could win those issues in court or that Los Alamos could win those issues in court. But it's a risk that, as a lawyer, I look at and think the city doesn't need to take if the voters are simply willing to reaffirm that they want this same tax and same revenue to remain in place. If that's controversial, if it's not something that the community is ready to do at this time, then of course, if there's a challenge, we'll defend it as best we can.
Okay. So I'm just trying to think. So come November, when, you know, this is on the ballot, there's a flip a coin, it could go either way. It could be passed or it could be not accepted. And if it's not accepted, that part of, so we have exposure then, if it's not accepted by the, by the community, by the voters? The updated, the updated language that says we will tax everything that you can talk across in terms of media?
Right. If, I mean, I'm not normally in the habit of talking about risk exposure at a public meeting in the microphone, but fundamentally, yes, you have exposure to risk that some other cities are experiencing based on your current ordinance. And if it doesn't pass in November, you will continue to have that risk.
Okay. Okay. Because as I think about this issue, it's, certainly it's not easy and it is complicated, but I think ultimately, I would like... complicated, but I think ultimately, I would like not to have to put this forward to the voters if we're covered here as a body, and if the ordinance is clear, and that's where I was kind of grabbing at the definition of a telephone. But, you know, I don't, don't know that that gives us any relief here, but anyways, turn back to you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Mejia.
Sure. Thank you for, staff, for doing this spreadsheet that we asked for. One of the reasons we asked for that is we had a community meeting, and as you can imagine, when you talk about potentially changing taxes, it makes people a little nervous. And one of the questions that those stakeholders asked was, where's the data? And we didn't have anything to offer them. So, while this may have taken the better part of a week for Anita, I think it was necessary because it did actually show some trends here. And if you look on page, well, the last page of the document, Attachment 3, in the top box, 1, 2, 3, 4, four of the cities saw an increase. Two stayed about the same. And then, one of the cities that saw an increase also saw a decrease in the second year of the contract, which could have to do with taxes going down because of the economy. So, I do want to make sure that when we move forward with this, however we proceed, that I've made it very clear to the stakeholders that we're here, I have no intent of supporting this if we're going to raise what they're paying already. So, I'd just like us to be cognizant of the fact that if the reduction from 6 to 5.5 is not enough, then we need to address that before we move forward. And then, also, I had a question on page 2 of the staff report, where it says, "Post-election comments, feedbacks." Towards the end of the paragraph, it said, "Feedback from San Jose noted that some companies complained about impacts on their businesses." What kind of impacts are we talking about? Are they, would they see a disproportionate increase because of type of technology that they're using? For Los Alamos, I don't have any reason to care about this.
You know, I included that in, just to be fair, I didn't want to hide, you know, only give the positive comments.
We appreciate that.
But specifically, Anita does not know, when she called her counterparts in those respective cities-
Right.
You know, finance directors and whatnot, they were recalling off the top of their head from five years ago-
Okay.
-just any comments that were heard. So, we don't have specifics. It was, that's just a generality.
Okay. Well, there may be a way that we can deduce it, and if so, I'd like to, before we move forward with this, if it's going to have an unfair impact on the businesses, I know that they said that there were some special allowances. I think that we need to make sure that we include that also, moving forward. And I do like the part about seniors and people with disabilities having a special allowance also. And then, in addition to that, on page 3 of 5, in the chart that we have, the second box, it talks about giving the opportunity for, you know, rebuttal arguments. I definitely think that we need to give the community the opportunity to express their concerns and voice them, and have them vet it out.
I just wanted to explain one thing about rebuttal arguments. There's always the opportunity for an argument in favor and an argument against.
Right.
The question is, then, whether after that, there's a second round of arguments where each side gets to rebut the other. And by the way, in some cases, there is no argument against-
Sure.
...submitted on these measures. There've been a number of cities where that didn't happen. So, rebuttal, whether or not there's rebuttal, there's always an opportunity for opposition argument. City council gets to decide whether to have rebuttal arguments. It's my understanding that in the past, historically, Los Alamos has had rebuttal arguments. So, we've, we're preparing the resolution. I believe Wendy and Kathy have already done that.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to go on the record because, moving forward with this, it's a difficult time for people economically, and even if this would be a minimal amount to them, it's significant. And so, I want to make sure that we, moving forward with this, are, our first charge of what we want to do is look out for the businesses and the residents, and not put any extra, you know, problems on their table. So, with that, I'll go ahead, Mayor, and pass it back to you. We'll have another round after open.
Absolutely. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Stevens?
All right. One of my concerns, too, was, and it's good that we're getting this feedback right now because, again, it goes back to educating the community on the, on the true purpose behind this, and it's updating ordinance that were put into effect many years ago. Another way of putting it. And I think the more we discuss it, the more openly we bring it out to the community, the more information we're going to have that's going to make it very important for everyone. I also have the same concern about that one comment that was made in there, as far as the impact to business. And so, it's something where it has to be fair for everybody, and it's something that all of the information has to be vetted out perfectly on it. And that's pretty much all I have on it. Everybody else has asked the questions, that answered quite a few of them for us, too. And I want to thank you, Councilmember Kuzimoto, for digging in as deep as you have, and also Councilmember Mejia.
Thank you.
Mayor Protempo.
Thank you. I also would like to thank the staff for the work. This was very interesting to look at, and I found it surprising in a lot of respects, the fact that, that the taxes appeared, that the tax measure passed by a good percent in every one of the cities. And it overall looked like it was not a huge issue when this was done for each one of the cities. And also, it's such a varied amount, whether they stayed the same, the percentage reduced it, so on and so forth. So, I certainly can appreciate the fact that it's difficult to figure out what the end result was. From listening, and thank you, Warren, but I was trying to follow where you were going there, but let me, let me hear from you, Sandy, again. We're really open to challenge, no matter what we do. Right?
You are far more protected if you adopt a modernized ordinance with voter approval.
Right.
That's the best protection you can get. It's not a guarantee. People can always sue over something.
Right.
But, but the best protection you can have is a modernized ordinance-
Mm-huh.
...with voter approval, and that assures that the revenue you have been collecting can continue to be collected and used for the services it's been paying for.
Okay. So, we're looking here, and the cost for the election would be a grand total, it says, of $18,500. Now...
I want to make sure that you realize that $11,000 of that is already budgeted.
Uh-huh.
So, yeah, okay.
Okay. And so, I guess what I'm kind of looking at here is, we're talking about $18,500, and I agree totally with what's been said. I would not be in favor of doing this if there was a chance that it would raise the tax to, to our business and residents. That's why I really think that it's important that we really look at how, reducing it to a degree so that we can kind of just stay even. I don't know how we can figure that out, but I think, I think we can. If we don't put this on the ballot, then we're really open to a challenge that the legal fees alone would be far more than $18,500. Am I correct? So, I'm trying to weigh, you know, the cost here, because that ultimately is what's most important to me. And if we can, if we can have these public meetings, I think having the two public meetings is going to tell us a lot. I think we'll be able to gauge how, the kind of questions, how the public is going to feel about this. So, I think those are very important, and that would probably give us the answer to a couple of things, whether we should go forward with this. And also, I think that in order to do it, we're going to have to decrease the utility tax to some degree. So, and I think that these meetings would give us a better picture of what, the percentage that we would have to decrease it. So, in my mind, at this point, I think we're better off to try to appeal to the community and see if we can't move forward, because I think it's going to end up costing the city less, and hope, and our goal would be to not have our residents and businesses pay anymore, and hopefully, maybe they could pay less, and we would still get enough money to, for the amount that we need for our budget.
Great.
Can I offer-
If any of that makes sense.
Yeah.
Two small clarifications. One is that, in terms of the cost of the election, of that $18,500, $11,000 of it is for the council seat election, so you spend that anyway.
Anyway.
The difference is $7,500 that is additional cost for putting a ballot measure on.
Or just this ballot measure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, it's a $7,500 cost. And the other thing that I probably should have mentioned earlier, that I think I've said before, is that every year in Congress, there has been a bill, and it hasn't passed yet, but every year in Congress, there's been a bill attempting to limit the ability of local jurisdictions to impose these kinds of taxes, and only allow the taxation of those things at the federal level. And if at some point that bill passes, then the community will lose the ability to do this, to modernize the ordinance, and to give it voter approval and protect the revenue. So, while I have no crystal ball that predicts how Congress behaves, it's another reason that one might want to do it sooner rather than later.
Excellent. Okay. From my position, just to kind of come out, before I give the explanation, is that I absolutely support moving forward with this, giving staff the opportunity to schedule these workshops, and really to kind of hit some of the issues and concerns that we heard up here. One is, as Councilmember Kuzimoto said, you know, that the essence of challenging the definitions, I think, is critical, because you're going to, you know, we will lose this out in the community if we, if we, you know, thought that it was something that we were moving ahead that we didn't need to do. Second thing is, where Councilmember Mejia is at, on the amount of the rate, you know, this is a starting point. What we're saying is that we're looking at a half percent as a decrease, because we're hoping that once the modernization is effect, that there'd be a net no impact. All of the research that was done on this item was really to answer that question directionally, do we think that there's going to be an impact at a half a percent? And I think, City Manager, I think you put it very appropriately, is the answer is, the results, based on what we heard, were inconclusive, because you had economic factors in play. At the same time, you had, it's like anything, we're doing a lot of things that we do in the cities, it's hard to specifically point out and say, it will or will not. I know Councilmember Mejia has went through multiple times, kind of as a challenge, you know, if you took the argument to an extreme, and you said, hey, you know, let's take the telephone utility users' tax from 6% to 1%, we would absolutely not have to worry about it based on this. This would then be very conclusive, that, you know, that the issue is, is a half a percent enough? I think that you have enough data to be able to take this to the workshops with the ad hoc committee, and listen to how concerned the community is that we break even at a minimum, and potentially less. Something that's really important to me, over and above what ends up happening with this specific item, TUT, was what would our overall strategy of what we got here? We've been on two different paths to get here. One was that we went through in closed session, and we've been hearing the problem coming with these potential litigation in closed session with a lot of detail, and the questions that you're now hearing out here in public are some of the questions that have been brought up in the back, is do we really want to do something with this? So, we've been watching this for about six or seven months, I would say-
At least.
-in closed session, as pending, as potential litigation. Now, it started to work itself out, and we've had two public discussions about it, and really what we've tried to do is frame to the community, is this something that we really need to take on? And as Warren talked about, I mean, this is a, this is a subjective call, strategic call, which is, do we want to be proactive? We see there's a liability. We can rationalize the do-nothing, and just let everything just go the way it goes, or do we be proactive and address it? And the reason why we're talking about tonight is that the council has looked at this and said, this is something that we need to address. But we're going to also take it to the community and say, hey, here's the options. And in that discussion, you know, the second path of activities that's been going on is we are looking at our taxation. So, the UUT is something that we've been talking about a lot. We've had discussions on the UUT give-back. We've, you know, that's another item that's been going in parallel. And what we did is, we said, hey, look, we've amassed on our reserves almost 80% of our budget per year, almost $8 million. We need to stop, we need to look at this and say, are we hoarding cash? Are we reinvesting it back into the community? Through that, we looked at the UUT, and we said, hey, look, maybe what we had to do is take a portion of the UUT and actually rebate it back to the community. And the response back from the community in a public session was, no, you know, that's only a couple dollars to you and me. Why don't you guys see what you can do with that money as a whole? So, we then started wrestling with coming back to the main issue, which is, is does the UUT need to be reduced, period? The UUT being utility users' tax. A subcomponent of the utility users' tax is what we're talking about tonight, which is the telephone users' tax. I, I think strategically that going, even if we went more aggressive, or Jerry's talking about, and went from 6% to 5%, and I'm not saying down to 1%, but somewhere there, it is a good step, even if it ends up at net negative, and we don't collect as much tax to the utility users, and we get more aggressive to make sure we sell it with no doubt that it would be a net negative input, or positive for the residents, that they wouldn't pay, and the businesses, they wouldn't pay more. I think it's a first step towards actually addressing the total UUT, whether that's, you know, two, four, six years from now, and see if we can live within the means now with the reduced revenue. And, and we do it with, we might not know how much we would actually end up. So, I, like I said, before I open it up to public comment, I'm very open to this. I think that the workshop will give us the idea of the vigor of the community, and how impassioned they are. You know, if we don't get a lot of feedback from the community, you know, I think what you're seeing here, and this is the message of the community, we're looking at a half percent, you know, telephone utility users' tax reduction. Hopefully, that'll be enough to break even. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up, and see if anybody in the public would like to add any more information, or their opinion on this item. If not, well, first of all, I'll open it up, if anybody, would anybody like to comment on this? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Dean Gross, I'm in business here in the town. Back in 2004, the utility tax did go back to the public, and that utility tax, I think, went to a 4.5% on electric charges, with the idea that there was a sunset clause in it that would bring it back up. It may have even been back in 2002. I don't know. Marilyn, you might remember.
Yes, I do remember.
And it was not voted on.
That was something the council voted to do.
No, there was a public vote.
We did have a public vote on the utility tax, period.
Right.
But the reduction to the 4.5% on the, on the electrical was because the electricity rates were really skyrocketing because of deregulation, and that was something that the council voted to do.
Right.
And then, they, it, we had to vote on it, and we had to vote on it every year to continue it. And at the time that we were looking at purchasing Laurel Park, the 1.5%, we felt that that would be the payment for Laurel Park. That's why we allowed it to go back up.
Right. In answer to your question, I think the idea of some public meetings, especially involving the chamber specifically, as it relates to businesses, those are the folks that have gone to the T1 lines and are using the voice-over-internet processes and so on. I'm not aware without a close examination on our bill, because we've modernized the same way. If the tax is being applied to that in the same fashion that it was when it was a landline, same thing from the standpoint of cellular service. Our cellular service is tied into that whole package now, and so, I don't know what that taxing is doing, or if we're quote, "escaping" the tax, because it's different technology. The biggest issue would be, and I think Councilmember Mejia points it out, is we're really not at a stage or a phase with the economy where we want to see anything increase. And so, what comes out, and this is where I think the meetings would help clarify it to residents and to businesses, is, you know, even though there's a decrease, is it a net increase? Because if we're, if we're scooting right now under the radar and not paying the tax by revising the ordinance and making it more bulletproof, it may be an increase. And if it is an increase, then the decrease to help offset the increase is something that- that we just don't have the figures for. And I'm hoping that when we do have public comment, more formal public comment, that we have people there. I noticed in looking at the chart that some of the cities have have actually used a couple of different consultants in the process. They obviously would have the knowledge and information on something like that. The other part that that I haven't heard is, I believe there's a time limit in terms of having to decide whether this goes on the ballot. And you have to do that within a specific time. And that being the case, if we don't hold the two meetings in June, you're going to miss the window to to actually get it on to the election in in November. And frankly, I think from the community standpoint, it would be far more preferable to bundle it with the election that's already going to be occurring rather than having to do it as a special election.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments on this? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close it, bring it back to the council. I'd like to see if, do you guys need a motion on this or do you think that you've got enough direction?
Mayor, something that might help is, Mr. Gross had a question about breaking it down and seeing what the actual numbers are. If the city attorney could convey to him what she said to us.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That would be appreciated because when you say to people, there's no way to determine, that's not an acceptable answer. That's why we did the benchmark, to try and see what the effects were on other cities that have done it. Now, it's maybe inconclusive, but to me, it looked like the majority of ones that could separate out the TUT from the UUT, there was a little bit of an increase, and that's not what we're looking to do. So if you could address the fact that, you know, you told us something-
Sure. And we talked about this at one of the meetings we had where the commissioners came and asked questions as well. I know it's not a very satisfying answer to hear that we don't have good data on this, but the fundamental issue is that the carriers collect the tax. The city doesn't collect the tax directly. So the carriers collect the tax and they give us a very summary reporting form that's that's kind of like their tax return, where they remit their TUT. And it doesn't break it down in any great detail. So the only way to gather information in detail is to conduct audits of carriers. And even the big cities that do routine audits, conduct audits once every three years or so of the major carriers. And because of the impacts of changes in technology, the economy, the changes in billing plans, people moving from one jurisdiction to another, all those other factors, it is pretty much impossible to get clear patterns of who's collecting what and how small changes in percentages will affect the overall number. The kind of survey that staff did here is helpful to show you, I think, that that the economy plays a significant part in what we collect as well as obviously the tax rate. As I think I said earlier, we don't know for sure which carriers are collecting on all the different kinds of communications taxes without or communication services without auditing them. We have a pretty good idea that they are collecting on more now than they once used to because there are a number of carriers who would just rather collect the same, in the same way in all cities, regardless of how the ordinances read, so they've been trying to keep up with technology anyway. There are some carriers that don't do that. So we can't give you exact numbers. I've worked with every one of the consultants who's who's on the list here. They can't give you exact numbers either. And they're all, they're all good consultants, but but none of us have that kind of detailed information to know exactly how it will break down. The best we can say is that the overall trend is that communications are becoming less expensive over time and therefore the the slow trend is declining TUT revenues. A modernization of the ordinance should see a slight uptick. Perhaps, we don't really know exactly why. It could be because we're capturing more of the technologies and treating everybody more equally, but it also could just be that the increased awareness and publicity about the ordinance causes some people who weren't collecting to start collecting because they're afraid of of the consequences if they don't. So a slight reduction and a modernization of the ordinance hopefully would get you to a net neutral position. That's the concept, anyway.
And I think Councilmember Mahia, I mean, it's absolutely true. You know, we heard it with the commissioners and, you know, the issue is, you know, and I want to clarify one of my statements, is that 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 report is inconclusive on a half percent sales tax. It's very conclusive for if you go one or above. So just, and and to set the right expectation, this may be as good as it gets data-wise because of the consultants. And so really, I think the only way you factor out on a liability or risk perspective on the city side, that we make sure that we don't have a positive increase in the tax, is you just go as low as we can handle it to hit the financials and make sure that we go and, you know, so it, really, the range is, are we talking a half percent to one or a half percent to three?
Yeah.
And I think that's how we're going to have to manage it in the workshop. I guess at this point, then, what I'd like to do is ask, does anybody else have any other comments, questions? Now, do you guys need a motion on this to move forward?
A motion?
A motion to set the dates, or are we good with?
No, we, we're good with direction if if it is agreed upon that that the council would like to set two community meetings.
Can, something that I think might be helpful, set two community meetings, the recommendation to meet with the chamber or the business constituency, would you be fitting them in to those two or would you, you know, every month, they have their their meeting that we could address the the chamber? And I'm just curious, is that something that we should do or just invite them to one of the community meetings?
I think the, well, first of all, we had, in anticipation of of the council wanting the two meetings, we we zeroed in on two dates. Those dates are flexible, but it's, you know, we definitely need Sandy there. So it's, you know, like everything, trying to juggle schedules. And at this point, I think that that I would just call John tomorrow and ask him if he is available, and then we go from there.
Okay.
Both, both meetings are, well, I'll just tell everyone right now, the the first meeting tentatively is scheduled for next Tuesday night at 6:00 PM here. And that is if we have the, you know, council is, council representatives to the subcommittee are available. Next Tuesday, I think it's the 12th at 6:00 PM here. And then the next, the one following would be two weeks from tonight at 6:00 o'clock prior to council regular session starting at 7:00. So we will go with that based on if the chamber, I think that's an excellent idea and and based on my discussion tomorrow, we'll figure that out.
Great. Thank you. So if there's no other comments on this, we're going to go ahead and move forward and you can give us any updates in the weekly staff report. I'm going to move on now to mayor and council-initiated business, council announcements. Anybody like to go first?
I don't mind.
Okay. Councilmember Stevens.
I had the pleasure at 5:00 today, going to the rededication of Laurel Park. And there's a lot of people up here on the council that are going to be speaking probably more about that park than I could even imagine. They have a lot more history on the park. If you get a chance, stop by. It's a beautiful park. The grass is phenomenal that's that they put in there. And you can't even, I looked all over and I couldn't even find a sprinkler head. So I don't know where you hid them, but you did a good job on it. And the unique thing was, while we were out there, I think we had girls softball. Gosh, I can't even think of all the different leagues out there.
Soccer.
Soccer was out there playing and and quite a few other activities that were going on. In fact, all the time that the mayor was giving his speech dedicating it, I was afraid I was going to have to field some some foul balls to keep him from getting hit. But the park is in full play. It's a beautiful facility now, and we can, we can really be proud of having it in our community the way it is right now. I also attended the Orange County Fire Authority where we voted on the hand crew. And so now we do have the twenty-member hand crew through the end of the year since this is wildfire season right now. And you can see fires happening in some of the states around us and in some parts of this state. The chances of us having a wildfire in the city of Los Alamos are zero. But the chances of us losing our engine company out of station two to go up into the hills in other areas are pretty high or were pretty high. And the idea is to make sure the entire county is safe. Losing our engine company out of Fire Station Two whenever we need it here to go fight wildfires doesn't make sense. And so by having the hand crew, they can also do brush clearance under the Edison lines and a lot of good preventive work that they are doing within the communities. And I would ask people in the community to to lean on them, lean on the OCFA, because right now, the hand crew is available for public education. And that can be used by different scouting organizations, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts on fire prevention, also for senior centers. And again, educating people on how to protect themselves and the community that they live in and also by our schools. So if you're in need of speakers from the Orange County Fire Authority, give them a call. Get the people out there because they'll give you a beautiful presentation as we saw tonight. So thank you for the presentation tonight on water safety. And I know that it's important this time of year that we're we're sensitive to our environment because our environment is definitely sensitive to everything that we do to it. So please be cautious on that. I also had the the opportunity, and it wasn't, I didn't go out of my way to do it, it just so happened. I've been on jury duty and I'm still on jury duty. And I happened to be on jury duty last week, and I believe it was on Thursday of last week or Wednesday of last week or week before. I've been on jury duty so long, my gosh. That I was on the 11th floor of the courthouse in Santa Ana, waiting to be called into trial. And I happened to look down at the police memorial in the center down there, and I saw a distinct figure that I knew from eleven floors up in the air, and it happened to be our police chief walking out there. But it was for the the Orange County Police Officers Memorial Ceremony. And during the break, I was able to go down to it. It was actually on May 23rd. And it gave me a chance to, again, stand, see our city being represented by our police chief, Todd, Todd Madder, and quite a few of the other chiefs from all the other cities in memory of fallen officers. And you never realize it, you know, when you're sure about something like that. But the first police officer was actually an Orange County Sheriff's Department officer that was memorialized, was, lost his life in 1912. And there are quite a few in between, too many in between for peace officers. And then the latest was Daniel R. Ackerman out of Buena Park in 2011. And so when you see that, when you see the families that were gathered there, when you see, I guess, the over, overall outpouring of love for the officers and the concern that the officers have for each other and the communities that showed up out of concern for their police departments, it was a good feeling. And it was a beautiful ceremony. Next year, when they have it, please go out of your way to attend it. It's very important. And I don't know what it is, but every time I hear bagpipes, I get a tear in my eye. And maybe it's because I'm older and I've heard too many bagpipes. But I don't like hearing bagpipes at ceremonies like this. And I don't like to hear 21-gun salutes. So keep your peace officers safe, keep your cities safe by making sure that we do have the right peace officers representing this city. And get involved in the cities yourself and hopefully we'll stop this list with Daniel R. Ackerman and no more, no more police officers in uniform dying. So next year, take the chance to go out and see it, please. That's all.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Kusamoto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have to report is that I did meet with the ad hoc subcommittee with Angie and with Councilmember Graham Mahia, and we're making progress on the questionnaire. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahia?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to address this for a third time and see if I can get some support. We were talking about the ballot measure for the TUT. I've asked on two separate occasions to look into a ballot measure for the revitalization, and we haven't gotten anywhere on it. And I know that it's a time-sensitive issue, so I'm going to ask this last time. I'm going to be nice and smile and hope for, you know, some response to that. I think that it's important that if we're going to go forward with the street revitalization, it's a lot of money, and there are some questions that the community has. I'd like to see if we can't answer those, get them to vote on it, and then if that's the case and they support it, then I'm happy to support it. But if not, we're supposed to be their voice, and if that's not something they're interested in, I'd like to know that. My second item is regarding the give back. Yes, Warren and I and Angie met. Angie had some real good product for us. I appreciate that. From my perspective, we came up with an idea, trying to give back in three different areas and not, not, for example, you know, Christmas ornaments or updating the medians, but we wanted to make sure that the kids had a benefit for it, the adults had a benefit from it, and also the seniors. So we're looking to spread that money across so, again, that it affects everyone and everyone benefits from it. Angie, can I ask for you to, are you going to address the highlights for the construction that's going on for the freeways and such so that people know what's happening and if they need to avoid any certain areas? I mean, is that anything you're going to address in yours? If not, I'll ask you to-
I wasn't planning to.
Okay. So if we could, I know we get a little update for the community's benefit, could we kind of go over the hot spots or or things that they need to be watching out for?
Dave, do you have that on the, off the top of your head?
Actually, I do not. Tony's been going to those meetings and he didn't make it tonight.
Jerry, I have asked that that be on our website.
Okay.
The residents can go to our website and find phone numbers and websites-
Right.
-to go to. So I have it on my desk, but I don't have it with-
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. We've, we've done it before, so I thought I'd just see if you couldn't address it. And since it's an early enough meeting where people might actually be watching, it might be some information that they could use. Also, if we could look into, got a call from someone on the news tonight that talked about the HOV lanes on the 405 and the potential for charging for those. I know that that was going back and forth. I can't recall what the outcome is or if the outcome has been decided. So if we could just get a little information, you can get back to me. It doesn't have to be at a city council meeting, or Troy, if you know.
The, that's still in play. The the business case was built that the HOV lanes would not be chargeable.
Right.
And so you can check with the OCTA folks that are actually doing that, but they, you know, the business case has stated doesn't have them as being chargeable.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to do is, if we could, I don't know if we need to address this as a council, but I am not in support of charges for those lanes. And if we're going to take an official stance on it, maybe that's something we could do before that decision is made.
Yeah, I mean, it's a $400 million project, and so I think that they've already, they've, that was part of the public gathering process to find out public opinion. So it's well documented. If you pull the meeting minutes, they've had three or four meetings and they, every six months, they'll have one actually with OCTA, it's a breakout session on it, so it's pretty documented. So I think maybe just having staff take a look at that.
Okay. So if they've not made any decision, they're just going to be looking at the at the product that they brought in up until this point?
They're going to point to the funding mechanisms that they put in place because they they had a couple different options, if you remember, all the way up to about $900 million.
Right.
And to get to that, it would have to be funded through potentially fees. And so they most, they picked the middle ground. They they picked a design that would not potentially collect more- They, they picked a design that would not potentially collect more fees and that they would be able to, but it wouldn't be this elaborate exchange at the 605, 405.
Right, I knew there were different options we could go, more elaborate or not. And then the last thing I'd like to do, and Mayor, this is nothing to offend you, but I'd like to welcome Travis Allen. He's your opponent for the assembly and I just thought it was nice to see you, Travis, and wish you all the best. And Mayor, I'll go ahead and pass it back to you.
Okay, great, thank you. Mayor Protempo.
Thank you. I also attended the Laurel Park reopening this afternoon and the park looks beautiful. I had shared a little story with our mayor and he prompted me to-
You have to.
-tell it. When we first went into an agreement in 1975 with the school district and we went into the agreement with Laurel Park, the council at that time wanted to find a name for that park and they had a contest. And it was an essay contest for students in the community and the prize was a $50 bond. And my daughter, who was 13 at the time, I shouldn't have said that, I guess. Anyway, she, she, she said, "I'm going to write an essay." And her, her name's Bonnie, and she did. And her essay was about the fact that her grandparents, who were residents here, natives here, and her parents, my husband and myself, all attended Laurel Elementary School, which was located where Hoffs Hut is. And she had heard the wonderful stories and even seen pictures of, of that school and how we talked about the auditorium there and all the fun we had there. So, that was the reason she thought we, that the park should be named Laurel Park after that. And she won that contest. So, that's the reason that the park is named Laurel Park. So, we're very proud of that. It was, the park looks beautiful and it was so fun to have the opening there with the softball girls playing, with the soccer kids in the background. And they all came over and were, were happy to get a little refreshment and that's what it's for. So, the staff did just a beautiful job on that park. It just looks great. And my only concern is gophers. So, I think we're going to have to look into, into how we can keep the gophers off that park. Secondly, I'd like to announce that on Saturday, this coming Saturday, June 9th, at 3:00, from 3:00 to 6:00, at St. Isidore, there is going to be a fundraiser, a wine tasting and meet and greet local artist. The artists will be Tom and Toni Bancroft. They both attended school in, at Los Alamos High School and their mother still lives in this community. They both have been Disney animators, they're, they're authors, they're quite famous. They will both be there with some of their artwork. Gretchen DiStefano, who was another artist for Disney, for Fantasia. Gustavo Diaz, another local artist. Denise Daniel, another local artist. And then, the wine is going to be, is being sponsored by the Seal Beach Winery. So, you'll be able to taste some wine, have some hors d'oeuvres. The cost is 35 per person and $60 per couple. So, we'd sure like to have a lot of people come out. I think it's going to be a great event. Then on Sunday, at St. Isidore, the Los Alamos Museum is going to be having a dedication of St. Isidore Chapel as the oldest community building. It is not the oldest building in Los Alamos. Some of the houses are older, but it is the oldest remaining community building from the original Main Street. And at 1:00, we are going to have a dedication and a small reception. So, everyone is invited to come to that. I would also like to say that we have had a first for our city. I've been involved, as many of you know, on this council for many, many years. We serve, each of us on different committees regionally. And this is the first time in the history of our city that we have had a council member that serves on the sanitation district, the Orange County Sanitation District, to be appointed as the chairperson. And Troy was appointed last Wednesday as a chairperson. That's out of 24 cities and the county, of course. And so, that's quite a feather in our hat. We're a very small city, so that is a real tribute to Troy because small cities usually don't get these kind of appointments. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
And with that, I think I'm done.
All right. Couple items. Had an opportunity to go to, let me ask, I didn't forget anybody, did I? I just, I did that last time and you reminded me. Had an opportunity to go to the Girl Scouts Awards Banquet over in Rossmore. And like I talked about earlier, the one award that I didn't talk about is we also got to issue the Presidential Award, which is a volunteer award. It went to two gals that were, they put in 100 hours of community service and they actually had a, you know, it was really a Presidential Award. It was from President Obama. And they issued that out and they had about 120 girls and their mom and dad and grandmas. There was over 300 or 400 people at the event. And so, Rush Auditorium over there, it was pretty full. And I just want to thank Jennifer Stanton for allowing the city council to continue to be involved with that. We also have a bunch of Eagle Scout Court of Honors coming up over the, over the summer that I've got invitations and we're, we're putting proclamations together for. And I would just invite anybody in the council, city manager, make sure everybody's invited. Again, I think that usually what ends up happening is a lot of these awards on the Boy Scouts, when they're going for their Eagle Award, they are also doing these great projects in our community. And it's been just an honor to see, some of them not always in Los Alamos, some of them in Long Beach, some of them in Seal, whatever. But, you know, a big part of the, the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts is citizenship and they get to see kind of on their end, they're getting involved in the community. And on the older end, we're up here doing city council and it kind of makes it a complete circle to them that public service is really important and that we're always honored to go. And, and I would ask that all of us, take a look and Angie, you'll get that out to everyone. The Laurel Park dedication, I just wanted to say again, thanks to our previous mayors that attended. We had Mayor Dean Gross, we had Mayor Alice Jemstow, we had Mayor Fred Freeman, and obviously Mayor Marilyn Poe, when she was there as they went through and actually secured that park, a very important part of our history. I want to also thank John Underwood, who, from LATV, every time we have a significant event in our city, John's out there covering it and really archiving it into our history of our city and goes into our museum. And, and, you know, and it's a full circle. After the, the dedication of the park, I also want to, the, the city commissioners, Parks and Recreation, that's in their purview. So, we assigned folks that are appointed from the city council to assign some of the community members to the commission. And we had Candy out there and, from the Parks and Rec Commission. So, we just, Candy Drucker, and she was out there. I just want to tell her, thanks for coming down and the rest of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And staff, you guys did a great job of managing the contract on that, that park. Everybody in the community, if you remember, we put it out for bid. It came back because we didn't like what the bid said. We thought there was a lot better deals to be had because the economic environment. You guys sent it out again, got a great, I think, a great deal on it and it, they did an excellent job. On Memorial Day, I just wanted to report a couple of events that I attended. I was in Fountain Valley for the Veterans of Foreign War Ceremony that they have down there. I was at Westminster Memorial Park, very touching. Yeah, my father's buried there, a veteran of the Korean War. And it was just an honor. Mayor Rice from Westminster asked, and so, she goes every year as she's winding down her journey we've been talking about up here, is ending her stint coming up at the end for 2012 here of being a mayor of the, the city of Westminster. But, you know, it's, it's the end of about 20-plus years of public service. So, it was an honor when she called and asked if we would participate in that. I also had an opportunity to go down to the Seal Beach, to the Seal Beach War Memorial that they have at the pier. And I missed the submarine silent ceremony and the tolling of the bells, but I wanted to thank Greg Smith at the Seal Beach Naval Weapons Station for the invitation. I just couldn't, I couldn't get there in time. So, with the Chamber of Commerce, I want to continue to plug Jerry and Warren. When I was at the meeting on Thursday, or last Friday in the morning, we had an opportunity to go through our building residential and commercial improvement program. But, we also, I had an opportunity to plug you two as being the leaders that would hopefully come through the chamber. We, and I tried to give a heads up of, hey, here's what's getting ready to come down and here's something that's very important. I think the community can see that even up here on the council, you can see the tension of whether the utility users tax, specifically the TUT, will make it to the ballot. You know, we, we are trying to make sure that even in the community, we've picked a balanced perspective, an ad hoc group that is looking at this with the perception, the community, that we have split councils, it's important that this one is, we're taking it on as a team. And at the end, we may not be able to reach a unanimous conclusion to bring it forward and that'll be a data point that we'll have to use to make a determination. But I want the message of the community is that we very much see how important it is to be proactive on the utility users tax. I think those are all my announcements and with that, I'll go to you, city manager.
Mayor, can I just add one last thing? In the staff, I'm sorry, in the weekly, we addressed the Cotella and Lexington Avenue light issue. And it talks here about OCTA, OCTA said that they would more than, be more than happy to change the westbound left turn back to a leading. I, I would just like that if we need to address this at a council level, that if it needs to be agendized, which I don't know that it's necessary, that maybe we do that because it is a, it is a problem for the community.
This is subjective thing that we've been talking about up here. So, I think, you know, Dave, if you aren't clear, that that's kind of where we were hoping to go. And I, I don't think we need to take it to a formal vote, but I, I think that if you kind of get the direction, unless there's anybody, since we can talk about it in public up here that has anything and it becomes a debate, we'll move it to a council agenda item. But I don't see any disagreement there.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Okay. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's June 4th already and one month from today is July 4th. So, how about that? We do a little celebration in our town, so I want to make sure that everyone has that on their calendars. June is a very busy month for city staff. Of course, I'm going to talk about the recreation department, but that's when we do all of our trainings, all of our aquatics trainings. Cory doesn't have a weekend off at all this month because of the, the staff trainings, getting ready for the busy summer at the pool, but also our day camp training and our parks program training. So, the message to the public is come join us, come sign up, there's something for everyone. Our next meeting, council meeting, that's when we will formally adopt the budget for next year. And we, we've had two meetings about our budget. We're in good shape. We did find funding for the two bus shelters and the Orville Lewis Basketball Court. So, we've changed some things around and you will have the opportunity to adopt the budget two weeks from tonight. So, other than that, we're working hard and that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so what I'd like to do is go ahead and make a motion to adjourn the meeting to June 18th, 2012. And Travis, I want to wish you the best of luck tomorrow night. Good luck. Meeting's adjourned.